Classic peaches, classic pizza stuff in there for the slop down there and their little. I didn't know that my great, great, my great grandfather owned. Everything Kingsley on Kingsley bought all that stuff out there from my great grandfather.
That's awesome.
So nineteen twenty-two, I didn't know that. And sold up to Kingsley in forty-five.
Wow.
Let me say the family didn't. And the only reason I figured found that I was in my cousin down in. Classic pizza. I think that will just live in Shaw up in. Pretty cool. Yeah, I'm sure.
Everybody ready to go? I got some spot.
Brad.
Are we on Justin?
Yep.
For recording?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We will start our council work session here on Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. And. We always start with non-arranged participation. Just to see if there's anybody that's come to share anything with us. Is there anybody that wants to speak on a non-arranged participation? Is. Is there anybody there? Is Kevin? Kevin, if you want to speak on an arrange, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, well, if he notifies or anybody sees a handle up, we'll come back to. So we'll come down to the main part of our work session, discussion with the sheriff's office. Thank you for coming. The floor is yours.
Uh, thank you for having me. I'm Derek Jackson. I'm the director of the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Here with Sergeant Green and Lieutenant Mike. Um, we really wanted to come if you have a sheriff waiting and discuss the uh mental health. And police uh services village. The order commissioner recently uh put it on ballot for the vendor. And so it will be uh for a vote to know that for. I hope we really wanted to come here and talk about the components that are related to sheriff. In overview and update on here's all the money produced for all of our shares. Make sure uh we answer any questions you might have and include the conditions in contact of um county line and then it was put in place. And what has been allowing us to do the last several years.
Uh, and what allowed us to do over the last several years. Uh, so next slide please. So just um, uh, and I'll make sure you all have a copy of this. Um, and so uh, there's some data in here. That I won't spend a ton of time going through, but it'll give you some uh background information, just in case you wanted to dig into it a little bit more. But the why, you know, the financial architecture, we now forget some fourteen or fifteen years later, but when Sheriff Clayton first took office. You know, there are lots of uh debates around the cost of a police service unit, how much it costs to put a deputy on the road. Um, and what that price was at the county was charging local jurisdictions like yourself. And so there's always this debate back and forth. We knew that the financial architecture was really struggling. And there needs to be a different way to help to fund that difference between the cost and the price. Uh, in the past, the county general fund would cover that difference. And this is where the debate always came in, right? Like every year there was a debate at the county level around how much that. Cost versus price difference was gonna be, and then how much do we pass on to the local jurisdiction? It became really contentious. Um, and so when Jerry Clayton first came in the office. First thing he did was get everybody in the room and say, I want to know every single penny of what it costs to put one of my deputies on the road. Now you'd think after two hundred years of the sheriff's office being existed, we would have known that, but until fifteen years ago, we honestly did not know. Every single penny that it costs to put a deputy on the road. So some of those numbers are in here. Uh, that we'll go through in detail, but just to give you some background of like why the village was important. A big part of the police service and mental health preservation village is just about helping to fund local police services. Uh, the other part was around um what we were doing around community mental health, you know, the state was cutting dollars for community mental health. They were losing dollars. And so there are about three hundred individuals that left uh community mental health caseloads. And you can see a direct connection to individuals who are on those caseloads without mental health services coming in and now being in our jail. So there was a direct public safety interface with them losing funding and not being able to provide certain services to individuals. With significant mental health challenges, they were winding up um having to be dealt with with our deputies, but ultimately winded up in the jail. And so obviously for us, it was all about being mission driven. We really believe um. You know, finding the bad guy, arresting the bad guy, preventing crime is a big part of our core mission. But when you think about what makes a safe community, it's really about about healthy and well communities, like any safe community is healthy. And so a part of the mental health and present uh uh public safety preservation village is really providing the resources that allow us to. Yes, provide traditional police services, but some of the other things I'll talk about in here are all those things that allow us to prevent. Crime from happening or allow us to actually get people directly to the services that they need. One of the biggest things that I uh share with people often is our jail is one of the largest mental health providers in the county. Shouldn't necessarily be that way, but it is. At one point, uh, one quarter, because every quarter we get a report from our uh medical provider. Uh, upwards of seventy-five percent of the people in the jail were on psychotropic medications. So just to give you a sense of the scope of the problem that we're talking around. Uh, we're also one of the largest substance use providers, substance uh use treatment providers in the county, because so many people in the jail. Also suffer from substance abuse disorder. So it does go hand in hand with these services um to actually help prevent crime and keep our community safe. So uh, we just tried to break this down into a couple of large pockets of money. So there's been about thirty-three million dollars from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three uh from the villages come into the sheriff's office. Uh, fourteen point three million of that has been for police services. And so this is to cover those costs, uh, the difference between the price and what it costs to put an actual officer on the street. These are twenty twenty-three numbers. Um, that two hundred and eight thousand at the very top, that's what it costs. Um, that is not what a deputy makes, so that is not a deputy salary, but when you add in uh the patrol car, the training, the equipment, you add in all these things. That cost to put a deputy on the street is two hundred and eight thousand. We call that a PSU or a police service unit. Um, the contract price for twenty twenty-three was one seventy, and so that difference of thirty-seven thousand, that's what the village covers. Um, right now, uh, the process is basically a granting process. Uh, so you all say, here's how many deputies you're gonna have in the contract. Um, and then we provide like a grant that money comes right back to you here locally to cover that difference. So the total of those costs and contracts are sixteen million dollars in twenty twenty-three. The village covered a little over three million dollars of that cost. Next slide. Yes.
How many deputies is that?
Uh, uh, we are, we are budgeted for roughly a hundred and one uh law enforcement staff. Yeah. So what you see that goes into that, and again, it's kind of hard to read on the screen, this is just some of the other pieces that go into what makes up that one seventy salary fringe, uniform, gun fleet. Some of those things are part of central dispatch, some of the technologies sort of have that body uh worn camera, the technology in the car. All those are the things that go into the formula that make up that one hundred and seventy thousand dollars uh for a police service unit. Yep.
In the past, when we were talking like you said about what the costs were and everything, there was um a portion of cost that was um. Like legacy uh. Oh, yeah, ongoing uh liabilities.
Mm-hmm.
So is there still a portion of that that's in there?
It it should be, and actually it might be on the next slide, so there's liability insurance on there. Um, there's some investigative stuff that's on there, so so actually I did see it right at the beginning, but there's a a liability line item. Uh, right in there as well, it covers some of that that cost.
Could be.
That what you're asking about?
Could be, it could be infringed. Yeah.
And also in friends, yeah, there's some of that in there. Uh, these are just some of the other things that aren't necessarily uh paid for out of the contract per se, but because you contract with the sheriff's office. These are some of the extra ancillary services that go into that, the detective bureau, the K nine uh unit. Um, the warrant officer, just some of the behind the scenes things and extra special teams that go with the sheriff's office uh because of the contract. But these again are some of the numbers that are difficult to see, but they'll be in the presentation for you. This just lays out all of our contract areas and the calls for service from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. So you'll see you guys have a second line there um from thirty-four hundred calls in twenty nineteen. And then it goes from year by year, a total fourteen thousand calls, and at the very bottom, it just shows the percentage of the village that is coming out. Uh, directed to police services. So the first year of the village is about forty-one percent in twenty twenty, forty-six percent of the village. Um, and then you get down to twenty twenty-two, thirty-six percent. By twenty twenty-six, it'll be forty-nine percent of the village. So just under half of the middle would be used to um cover the contract leasing costs. Well, some of the other things that the uh village allows us to do, we have a a co-responder unit with community mental health. So so many of our calls are for someone who's suffering from a mental health crisis. And so we pull a social worker and a deputy together as partners, they ride together on shift. This was um piloted out in Ipsilanti Township, which was our largest area and also had the. Largest number of calls related to mental health, so we wanted to test it. To see how effective it was, and they've been very, very effective. You'll see just a few of the numbers. So what this allows to do, like all of our deputies are trained in how to triage a behavioral health crisis. But now you have a social worker to police office together to respond to certain cases, do follow up. Make sure that person is getting connected to their caseworker, their social worker, because many of them are already community mental health clients. So it's a different way, it's another tool, a mechanism for us to connect the folks that we are frequently interacting with and hopefully. Diverting them to get them the real resources they need, so it frees up our other deputies to do what they do best. And so uh, one reason I wanted to highlight is although it's piloted in Ipsy Township. Um, in this next shift bid, which is in July, uh, you'll see a second unit, which will be countywide. So you may see some numbers and data and hear about the co-responder unit being out here in your area. And so just wanted to make sure you knew that is starting um uh coming up in the next shift bid.
So. Other communities in Ipsy, other states, do they provide these services and do they, do you have uh percentages of how much it's helped you? Be better at your job?
Yeah, and you know what? And the um, there's an annual report, I'll also make sure you all get that, and it talks a little bit more about the CRU data specifically. So think of it this way, um, what we think about is like this continuum of services. So yes, we are getting called out a lot of times to certain kinds of calls. And then we'll arrest the person, they come to jail, or in this case, maybe it's a psych ER, but it's like a never-ending cycle, right? They're there for a couple of days, they get out right now, kind of pre and then through COVID. Um, some of these lower level things aren't even really being booked into the jail, so you got folks who are, it's minor, but causing a a level of. Harm in the community and not really getting the help that they need. So this in some ways is a front door to get them to the right service, to get them to the right part of government. Um, and so, yeah, so there's a lot of data out there that is showing about how this is actually impacting. And getting them the help that they really need versus having them s- cycle through the jail.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So again, the village pays for that. Um, this one is just about uh closure rates of some of our violent crime. Again, I know it's difficult to see, but I put this in here because. Sometimes people say, well, you're doing all these things that are like prevention focused, you know, you're being soft on crime. What I like to say is the data speaks differently. If you commit crime, particularly violent crime in Washington County, we're gonna catch you, right? You're gonna um, you know, be held accountable. So that first set of lines, that yellow bar is for homicides. Eighty, we solve eighty-nine percent of our homicides, right? The national average is in blue, which is sixty-one percent. Uh, the state average is in green, which is just over fifty percent. So we are well above average when you talk about like the most serious of serious crime. So we got great det- detectives and deputies who are really doing a great job in solving serious crime. The next set is criminal sexual conduct. Then the third set of numbers is around robbery and then aggravated assault. So you see in in the four kind of most violent um crimes that are out there, we are above the state average and definitely above uh even the national average. So in those traditional crime fighting, arrest the bad guy, solve the crime, we do remarkably well in those areas as well. Next slide. The second big chunk of money goes to emergency services, so four point one billion of that thirty-three million. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three went to basically dispatch and emergency services. Um, a large chunk of that, you move to the next slide, went to building out Washington Metro Dispatch, which is out on Z Road. You know, we were, we were in the space at Ann Arbor City in their fire department downtown. Uh, it didn't allow us to physically expand. Um, you may recall years ago, there used to be a lot of dispatch centers around the county. Uh, almost every, every agency had their own dispatch center, which meant. That every agency had the legacy costs, they had the staffing costs, they had the training costs, they had the equipment costs. Uh, over the years, we now have a metro dispatcher. Where we wind up dispatching for the majority of Washington County, and what that does. Um, it's like if you had a, if you were renting an apartment by yourself and you're paying a hundred percent of the freight, all the utilities, paying your rent. And you got a roommate, you split it fifty fifty, same utility, same house, but now the cost is reduced because you're sharing it. Across dispatch center, we're now sharing those costs. Uh, Ann Arbor City alone saves one million dollars a year because of the contract, and across the county, you save three point five million. More stat. Uh, I think a better structure, because now our dispatch center knows where all the cars in the county are. Um, you don't have to transfer to Ann Arbor or transfer to St. Chelsea and all these other areas. You actually have one metro dispatch center. So more safe for our community, but also uh financially responsible as well. The village um allowed us to pay off the bond for that uh building upgrade. So by the end of this village in twenty twenty-six, that bond will be paid off, and that center will be um built out and ready for expansion as well, if we need to grow into the future. Uh, these are just some of the, I'm sorry, question, question?
Yeah, uh, just dispatch for police services or for all emergency?
Uh, great question. So there's a big conversation these days in Washington all around, so we're just for uh 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 police services.
Okay.
Uh, here on Valley Avenue, it's HBA dispatches for HBA and for fire. And so there are lots of conversations these days around uh what does fire do in the future? And so you may hear some of that. Uh, we just finished uh a report that looked at basically a ten-year kind of lookout, like what would it take for dispatch? What are we gonna look like in ten years? And so we're just starting to roll out those findings. Um, and have some of those larger conversations, but it, fire is done by HBA.
Yeah, I've, I've been hearing about that from the fire chief for years.
And uh, I think those conversations are um becoming more and more vocal all across the county as well. Uh, the third um kind of pocket of money is really what I get to oversee is the director of community engagement. And that's diversion, deflection, reentry services, kind of alternatives to traditional incarceration. I like to remind people that our jail is the smallest jail per capita in the state of Michigan. Um, most counties in Michigan have about three beds per one thousand people. We have one bed per one thousand. Um, and so just for a county our size, let alone how much our county grows when that student population is on Eastern and U of M and Washington House campus. Uh, we are a very small jail for the population size. So even if we wanted to, we don't have the physical space to just lock people up. Also, that's not our balance, right? And so a lot of the things that have been paid out, the village allows us to think a little bit differently about how we do this work. Next slide. So um, you go to the next slide. Uh, one of the things that we do around community engagement, I'll just give you one example is uh, I I mentioned. Um, the co-response unit, but something else we have is something called LEAD, a law enforcement assisted diversion. So think about an officer who comes in contact with someone over and over and over, we might have arrested them eight, nine, ten times. If they were arrested eight, nine, or ten times and they were violent, they'd be in prison, right? So someone cycling in and out of our jail for very minor level crimes. It a lot of times comes back to mental health or addiction. So now on that tenth time that that officer is dealing with them, say, hold up, wait a second. If the person who owned this business who called about you lawyering outside, and if you're okay with it. How about I call out the social worker and really get you connected to the services you need, because just arresting you eleven times and getting you right back out of jail is not help. And as long as that person is willing to to meet, that small minor level situation goes away. It's the only thing we have in our county that is the entire system. Prosecutor, public defender, uh, law enforcement and kind of human services around the table, walking people through and managing. We have about two hundred and twenty-two people in our county who we call high utilizers. Those people have come into our jail six or more times, and many of them fall into this category where it's significant mental health challenges or significant addiction. And so really LEAD is a small number of people, but and really intensive. But it gives our officers another tool other than just, I deal with you today, I arrest you. I'll do with you next week, I arrest you, and we're talking, some people have been in our jail, you know, upwards of thirty times. And so clearly, just arresting them and letting them go isn't doing anything. It's not serious enough for them to be going to prison or anything like that. And so this is just another tool. The village allows pay for some of the staffing, the resources to provide that offer. Again, it's just another tool in our deputy's tool belt uh to be able to hopefully provide. An entry door into services versus trying to lock them up. And again, our jail isn't big enough. If you wanted to hold these individuals for any substantial period of time. What goes hand in hand with that is community corrections. So this is all the alternatives to incarceration. Heather, GPS, alcohol testing, drug testing. So folks can stay employed, stay connected to their family, but still be held accountable by the court. So a lot of this population is pre-trial, or maybe they were sentenced. To um have to drug test for so long and attend classes like in sobriety court. So a big part of what we provide the sheriff's office is all of the staff at community corrections who does all that work. This, and I don't think I have the data in this particular presentation, but community corrections has exploded over the last five to six years. Um, again, the courts can't lock everybody in our jail. Um, and so these are alternatives to just housing people physically in the jail. The village allows us in the next slide will show some of those things that allows us to cover to be able to do that work. And we're getting close to the end, but reentry services is um, you know, someone's in our jail. We often think about how can we make sure someone leaves the jail better prepared for success than when they enter the jail? If you have someone who's sitting there for an average of thirteen days, limited in what you can do. But you might be able to connect them to certain venue, but if you have been there for thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, up to a year, uh, there's a lot you can do with someone. Eighty-five percent of the people in our jail are from our community, which means they're coming back to our community. So we see it as a prime opportunity to not us as the sheriff's office do all the work, but to open the doors of the jail to let the experts come and have um a connection. Uh, how might we provide uh treatment services around addiction? How might we make sure uh, and the state gives us housing vouchers for this? If someone who's homeless when they come in has a voucher to be able to go into housing, maybe the sheriff's office. So there is a number of different things we do around reentry services. Um, these are some of the dollars that pay for the staff that work at the sheriff's office. But if you were to sit around the table with us in our reentry meetings, there's about twenty to twenty-five people around that table, only three to four work at the sheriff's office. The majority are all of our human service partners that we either contract with uh or raise funding together with to help us do this work. And then finally, this is uh just the additional investments. I said, we broke up and took out these three large parts for this conversation. Um, but there's about one point seven million dollars that goes into equipment and technology, things like the body camera replacements. Um, in in-car video, um, looking at, uh, there's no way the lieutenant or the sergeant can watch every second of every minute of every uh body cam video. And so there's a system we've invested in, which will look for conversations with deputies and the public. If there are certain phrases or tone of inflection, there's certain derogatory terms that are used. The sergeant lieutenant is gonna get alerted, they're gonna know to go review that particular video. It can be an early warning system, so we kind of correct some uh behavior we want to correct. Uh, but it also can help us um make sure we're monitoring and not missing things, right? The technology allows us to do that. That's paid for by the village. Um, we did use one point six million to uh for hazard pay for our staff during COVID. Uh, the county paid for about half of it. It was gonna be like five thousand dollars a person, and the sheriff said, nope. Our staff deserve, but that um standard was ten thousand, and so we use the village to give our staff that hazard pay. That the county wasn't gonna use. Uh, there's some for jail improvements, like the roof of the jail had to be improved. Um, and some of these that I think are significant. For us kind of gets into the weeds, but it's important for you to know for one reason. If the village doesn't cover this, the county general fund has to cover it. The county general fund covers it. There are other vital resources that don't um uh get funded, right? Um, so this allowed us to do some things without having to um take resources from other parts of county government. Uh, the diversity, equity, inclusion work we're doing, uh, there's some community partner stuff, like uh some uh community organizations who are helping us do some of this work. Um, and then the last one is allocated for future expenses. People always say, well, that's a large chunk of money, three point two million, what is it? If the village were to go away today, there's enough money to sunset all the things we've created. And so that three point two million is really like, how do you slowly turn off the lights? Uh, so it isn't just a slush fund that's sitting there for us to buy whatever we want. It's literally marked for if for some reason the village doesn't pass, how do we start to um uh kind of deconstruct some of the things we've done? A lot of the infrastructure, including police service infrastructure, is now built on the village. All of the things around diversion, deflection are built on the village. Uh, so there's a lot of things that go into that, and that's what that last one is. So any, uh, again, we just wanted to come and give a a a broad overview. So you know what the dollars have been used for to date. Uh, it's not my job to say you're supposed to like it or not like it, it's just to give off facts. And also to let people know that the uh commissioners did put it on the ballot in November. So it will be one of several uh countywide villages that will be on the ballot for voters um in your city.
How many years is it?
Uh, it's another six-year village.
Another six years.
Mm-hmm. It's supposed to renew.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions you all might have?
If anybody watches TV very much, you're not the only police department that's asking for this kind of help. Um, we, I think we lost an officer in Wayne County.
Uh, Oakland.
What's that?
In Oakland.
County, okay, so I, I mean, if you watch the news, there's a lot of different police departments that are asking for additional help to. Try to help them be better at mental health. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And and again, uh, I didn't put all the. You know, details of the data in here, but if you just think about the number of call and respond to that are dealing around addiction or mental health, it's quite significant. Um, some of the more dangerous situations can involve one of those two things. Uh, but also what we've been trying to do is just give our deputies some different tools in a tool belt, not that they have to be the experts to solve these issues by themselves. But if they have a phone number to call, they can pick up that phone, call that social worker out, and the social worker can kind of take over. Um, and so we try to give uh a lot of different tools in the tool belt for our deputies to relieve some of that pressure and stress. So that they can do a more effective job in the community.
Jimmy.
Yep, thank you. Could you speak to the impact that the village has had so far on recidivism rates?
Yeah, so um, it. I'll say this, that uh recidivism, when we started to measure it, uh, say twelve years ago, was roughly sixty-three percent. And I say it in that way because there's a lot of different ways to measure recidivism. Right now, our reentry program works with some of the highest risk folks. The jail can house the four hundred and four people. We're not working uh with case management of four hundred and four people. We're working with roughly about thirty to sixty people. And so it's hard to say that our reentry program out of these dollars is gonna change the overall county recidivism rate. But what we can say is now the recidivism rate is forty-two percent versus sixty-three percent. Um, there's some um reports out there about from Wayne State University that talks about. Every doorway into the system and out of it, there are about six of those doorways. And if you can put things in place to help deflect people who are getting in in the first place, or if they're in, to help them get out, better prepare for success. You can see a remarkable reduction around your recidivism rate. So it's a pretty complex conversation around how do you measure recidivism? Some people only measure it, have you come back in three years? Some people only measure and say, have you ever come back? Um, a big part of our population in Washington County comes back for what's called technical violations. I didn't commit a new crime, but I failed to go to my class, I failed to drug test. Um, as I failed a drugs, I just failed to show up to drug test, and then you get warned, you wind back up in the jail. So there's lots of different ways to measure it. When we look at the total longevity who've come back into our jails, um, forty-two percent is where we sit now.
So I guess if you were to, is there one single indicator that you could point to that demonstrates the village has been successful to date? Or and or what single indicator would be used in the future to evaluate the success?
That's a great question. So I think, you know, the middle is complex, there's so many different components, so I'll just rattle off a few. I think if we were to remember back to when, I'm not sure who was sitting around this table back when the county was always arguing with the local jurisdictions around the cost. Our deputies every year literally had to hear this rhetoric around them. Are we gonna have to lay up deputies because our contract is gonna be cut? So for one internally, you just don't have to worry about every single year. Um, this debate with you and the county and sheriff's office around how much that pricing cost is gonna be. That's a significant change because it's coming out of the village. From some hard data around some things I'll I'll talk about we live, I didn't even mention it here. But roughly eighty to eighty-five percent of the shootings in our county are retaliatory in nature. Yeah, so some to me are retaliating. Um, so what we do, we hire people and train them who have been armed. Um, and we send them into the hospital bedside to start dealing with the person that had been violently stabbed, assaulted, or shot. And then they actually help that person deal with that fear angry problem, so they're less likely to pick up a weapon. So since we started, we've talked to fifty-three, worked with fifty-three people, not a single one has retaliated in that way. Doesn't mean a single one hasn't gone back to jail or gone to jail, because in our county, um, a lot of folks. Who are um who've been shot are kind of involved in those certain lifestyle. And so it doesn't mean that it's a magic wand and everything is perfect, but what we do know is that that program, which is funded by the village, is having a direct. Um, relation to lowering the likelihood of someone retaliating. The same thing for LEED, LEED is a small group of people, those most um intensive cases. I'll give you an example. There's someone who's been in our jail fifty or sixty times, deputies deal with them on a regular basis, all minor level stuff, panhandling kind of stuff. We know that addiction and mental health is a big part of why he cycles in and out. He would never admit that he had an addiction problem. He starts working with lead, and then he finally admits that he needs help with addiction. We get him into treatment, he's there for uh about three months, he leaves early, so he drops out of treatment. Uh, but he stays sober for four months. That was the longest four months since seventeen years old that we hadn't seen him in our jail. Oh, so small incremental wins in that case are pretty significant for an individual. So small incremental wins in that case were pretty significant for an individual who's that intensive. And so each program, we can kind of talk about what you've seen the impact of, but there are lots of, I would say, really important wins. The fact that the community correction numbers can continue to go up means that our jail is not overcrowded. It means that we're not, you might remember fifteen years ago, we were loading people on buses and having to pay other counties around us to actually house the people from Washington County. So community corrections, amongst some other things, allow us to make sure that we're not having to do that. And then the final one, I'll just say about fiscal responsibility, metro dispatch, that allows us to save lots of money. And so just to be, you know, better fiscal stewards across the town. So all the village generates some revenue for us to do that work. It allows us as government to work more regional. And I think that also is a win. So there's some financial stuff, some community engagement related stuff, some reading related stuff. There are lots of different, I would say, significant wins because of the village.
Yeah, so this, certainly I'm not an expert in this area at all. Just in past conversations with community members who knew more about this area, you know, they talked about the long-term impacts of the clothing, the closing of psychiatric hospitals and how that plays into some of what you're dealing with here. So I guess I would be curious, if you could just speak to that generally, is this a, this partnership? And sort of this funding mechanism, I guess, do you feel like this is a sustainable, long-term solution to a problem that maybe was created, you know, by some other system shutting down? Do you think we need to revert back to what that older system was? Is this the permanent future best case scenario, or is, are we just biding our time till something better comes along?
I think that's a great question. And I honestly don't have all the answers to what we should do on a state level, but you can see a direct relationship to when the hospitals were closed and those institutions were closed, the population that are officers around the country and around the state in particular were starting to deal with. And you can also see them coming into jails and prisons. So that had a direct relation to us. I would just say that for us, it was about, okay, what can we do? How do we do our part? And so our part allows us to, to the best of our ability, start tackling some of the things that the sheriff's office and county community mental health really could tackle. Is it a long-term solution? I think it does a lot. It should provide us some kind of stability and funding around these mechanisms are proven to be effective and they're working. If the national landscape or the state larger landscape begins to change, I think we should reevaluate those conversations. There are things around housing right now in Washington County that are evolving. It makes it harder to afford to be able to live all throughout Washington County. And so those are some kind of external features that I think will have impact on some of this work. But as of right now, when you look at the level and it's really about trying the best that we can to wrap our hands around these challenges of what we really have. So there could be a lot more help from the state level and definitely from the federal level as well to help deal with some of these issues. A jail is not the place for someone who has mental health challenges, not at all. And unfortunately, our jail has become, and not just ours, all jails around the country have become that. But that is not the place for someone. In fact, sometimes we can actually see their behavior get a lot worse because they are incarcerated. So for us, how do we make sure when we get called and nine-one-one is called and our deputies are interacting with someone? We may not be the best responder, but we may have a great, great partner that we can connect someone to.
Thank you.
In my twenty-four years in the sheriff's office, when I started, I was first five, ten years, you almost never let you suicide personally. You just didn't, you just didn't have, it was a rare thing. It was like a unicorn kind of call. Now it's literally every day that we're going to this call. And I think it's a combination, not only the hospitals, but there's a lot of sociocultural things that happen, especially young people on the cell phone and social media, all that that affects the younger populations, mental health. They're one of the significant populations we deal with, with mental health and suicidal runs. And so even today, one of our deputies, I think was helping out with, guy was suicidal, was a hostage. Deputy, he said, he's sitting on a gun. And so deputy had to deal with that problem. One of the things we do with community mental health is we've got these partnerships with them that we built through, you know, some of the village and just those collaborations that we got together. When, like, I read a lot of our training, so when I'm writing some of the training scenarios, it's a de-escalation and mental health related scenario. Not only do I run it through kind of my filters, like the tactical filters, how do we do it from a police perspective? I will literally take those work plans for those scenarios, send them over to CMH clinician, have them look at those scenarios and say, hey, what can we, what else from your perspective can we do here in order to improve this scenario? Then not only do we write this scenario that way, but then when we actually have the scenario going on in that live training, we invite those clinicians to come over to CMH to observe the scenarios. So then as we're giving the, all of our staff feedback on how they perform in this particular scenario, you do it from a law enforcement perspective, from a tactical perspective, how do you stay safe, how do you keep each other safe? But then also from that mental health perspective, we'll have the CMH clinicians give their view, this is what you did really well. This is what you could think about trying to do in the future to kind of mitigate this problem you came up against. So having those relationships is actually extremely beneficial for us because we are dealing with it on an unbelievable level these days. It's a continuous basis.
We need to talk about the relationship as well with SWAT.
So same thing with SWAT team, we've got our SWAT team, which is the tactical arm of the, the operations. Then we've got the CNT team, which is the negotiator piece of it. And so part of the CNT team, they actually have a number of CMH clinicians that are part of that team. So they work directly, they train with that team on a regular basis. So those are the people that are talking to people. So they may not necessarily be the person that's talking on the phone, it's the person that's in crisis that they're dealing with. But what happens is they're sitting there listening to the call and they're feeding information based on their experience and their higher levels of training. How can we best resolve this situation in the safest possible way for everybody? So I'm listening to that person and identifying various options for them. They can give those negotiators those extra bits of information that are really beneficial for us. It's the tactical side of things like making hire both members of the SWAT team to make the decisions when we're coming up with our plans, how are we going to deal with this problem? What's coming next? What do they think might be coming in? And how do we address some of those issues? By having that expertise on site and on hand all the time, again, because of those relationships, we do have a CMH and the mental health side of things, there's significant difference. It makes a huge difference.
You just talked about the difference between that and there, SWAT versus what?
So before, our deputies are trained in CNT and they go to that negotiator's school and things like that most time. But again, they're not master's level clinicians when it comes to, you know, community mental health type issues. So like, you know, before, you might have limited information as to how we, you know, how we thought things are going and what maybe buttons to push with that individual, how to reach that individual to get them to the point where it is a safe resolution for everybody. But having the clinicians there on site does help to a certain degree with identifying additional avenues that they can then take and potentially end those conversations in a way that it wears the person down, whatever tactic they're utilizing to make that a safe outcome for everybody.
Is there, I don't need obviously specific details, but you know, you're sharing a lot of the successes of this partnership. Is, can you think of a time or more than one time where something about that partnership in a particular situation really did not go as planned? And can you speak to like lessons learned from that? Or I mean, I imagine you've, or is every time it's, you've had the partnership, you've said, wow, that turned out so much better than it would have, or are there times it's not?
It's one of those things, especially like that context, SWAT in context. Frequently, either people come up relatively quickly, it'll turn into an extremely drawn out time, or they will get themselves, that they're suicidal in a relationship form. And I can't give you percentages, this is what happens, but anytime it doesn't end up with a safe outcome. We fortunately, I can only think of one shooting with mental health. First of all, we actually had to, actually, it was a firearm, one shooting. And that was in NFC City a number of years ago, where part of the tactical team was involved with that negotiation. But again, it is proximity dictated, there's some things there, there's definitely lessons to be learned. But when it comes to the negotiators and pieces of data, our goal is always to create a safe resolution. Even as the tactic, we don't want to have to go into the house and throw guns away, so I'm going to get shot. And last thing I want to see is any or team member injured. So again, as difficult as it is for us, we are, you know, the kind of type of day we want to push, we want to go, let's make this happen. There's things that we think tactically we could do to impress a situation. But the ability for us to utilize those negotiators in that way has been.
Thank you. I have other questions about our local police services that came up at our last meeting, but I am happy like wrapping up this part of the conversation before I ask those.
Okay, if going in any direction, Jamie.
Okay, yeah, so I just, and it might take me a minute to pull up our packet. So we had a sheriff's report in our last packet and just noting some really extreme increases in year over year. So I'm pulling up what we have in the current packet. So this would be showing from May, but it's showing like a year-to-date change. So citations went up a hundred and three percent. And medical assists are up ninety-five percent. So I guess I had the question at the last meeting and I said, do we know what's behind the increase in citations? I know it's a question we've asked about in the past. And some people here had some comments, but they said, we're having the sheriffs here in the future. Maybe they could speak to that then. So I guess, anything locally we should know about citations or what's changed in?
I think when it comes to citations, because there's so many variables that are out there, I can't say it's like one thing or just this or just that. But some of the variables that do fall into that category are staff and who we have as staff here. Traditionally, you guys have had senior grizzled deputies that, you know, looking to relax the last five, six years of their career. That's not the case anymore. Because we've had so much turnover. You guys are, you have a few older staff here, but then you also have a mix of brand-new staff. Brand-new staff tend to make a lot more traffic stops, to be perfectly honest. And then when it comes to citations, the same way. Some people write a lot of citations, some people don't, because I, I kind of thought that these numbers would kind of come up. So year-to-date, for twenty-four, overall, we're at about eleven percent over the course of the year. And then we're at eleven percent citations for, for the year. So we're writing about one ticket per.
The rate is about a percent, right? Okay, which isn't far off where you were.
About where we kind of normally are last year, we're at seven percent for the same timeframe. So that's more or less right. And I think there's some variability. There was quite a few extras, like in March, there was, but somebody's making a lot of stops. When, I don't know, making citations, you know, making those stops. Right, that, but, one of our new deputies, he's very vigorous about his traffic enforcement. So he's making a lot of stops. And so I think he drove a lot of those numbers. Then he was actually off in May, which now you see the numbers were eighty-eight. So Ray may be a significant factor.
Right, yeah, I just didn't know if there was some, like, we're making a concerted effort for this type of thing.
No, nothing, nothing specific. We expect traffic enforcement out of everybody. We take the complaints that the city passes along, or that we get from citizens, because they have the basis. But some, majority of the stops happen right along Main Street and River. That, that main thoroughfare right there, most of them happen there. But when I pull up the data maps of where they're occurring, again, the majority are kind of along that thoroughfare. But then if you look, it's almost like every single intersection in the city is at least one or two stops going, you're there and everywhere.
I did actually just see an article, somebody pulled over, Justin Timberlake, who was maybe a toddler when Justin Timberlake was famous, had no idea who he was. But in the article basically said he was known in the area, he's this young, whoever, you know, officer and is wanting to do that. So that's consistent with that.
Jimmy, can I, can I?
Yep.
Bill off that real quick?
Yep.
Can you talk about staffing currently and current vacancies?
So currently, still, we have not filled the third day shift position for some time. Right now, Viesel just came out of schools. He's going to be one of the day shift deputies for collaboration in conjunction with low on day shift. Generally, we're going back to what, two in afternoons? Back to two in afternoons, we've got three slated. Then at midnight shift, we've got one currently working on midnight shift. Our other midnight car is on long-term medical leave. He sustained a neck injury in training, so he had his spine fused. So he's just coming back to do light duty right now. But so Bupa, those guys, Bupa, he's been off for the last couple of months because of that injury. But he's healing up and should hopefully be back before he retires next year. But so, and we are down, so to be honest.
Of it. And then I guess to tie the two conversations together, can you speak to, I guess, the role CMH or that partnership has played actually here in the city of Dexter? I mean, has that been relevant to us hyper locally or?
Because what the deputies can do is, with the new CRU unit, they will be like one of the primary responders for that. And then next month, when that rolls out, kind of lies. So if you did have somebody that knew it was like a flag or something along those lines, or somebody was having one of those issues and they're available, they would be the primary respondent for that particular call. Unless they were opposite side of the economy and it's something that required an immediate, you know, response or something along those lines. Then obviously deputy can take your first, and they would kind of just slow things down until they can get here and potentially assist. Or at any given time, there's the CMH hotline. So we call them, call their hotline and say, hey, we need somebody out here to assist us. Or if it's occasionally, people that we know we've dealt with time and time again, we'll call them on the way and say, hey, we're going to deal with so-and-so again, can you send somebody? If they have somebody available, send. They don't always have somebody available, it's the truth of the matter. And then sometimes, you know, a lot of, most of the time, they will let us take the lead, to be honest with you. This is kind of the way we operate. We'll step in front of people and do the talking, but for anyone else, a step up. Some of them are much better than others about stepping in and taking charge of the scene. But we have that because one of our tools and toolkit.
I don't have any exact numbers. Even though partly you know that obviously with fun, we go out and I've seen them get their part of the group station report. And they specifically speak to, we just have in Chelsea, they broke down kind of a western Jersey, attended one of the county conferences. I'm just thinking about hearing how they're getting, as well as getting that data, or having their numbers in there, their piece to it. But to answer your question, it does, it happened, right? Where they are providing the service and backup service to us on this part of, in your city.
Okay, thanks so much. I'm good.
Anything else for the general pool?
I don't think so.
Love the pink vehicle. It was, it stood out like crazy in the parade, started the parade. You cannot miss it. Thanks for all your support this weekend.
Yeah, thank you for what you do.
I think this has been very helpful for us for an overview of that. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. See you guys.
Thank you. So before we conclude the workshop, I'll ask again, is there any non-arranged participation? Anyone in the audience like to speak this evening? Or online? I guess we'll conclude the workshop about fifteen minutes earlier. We'll start our regular meeting at seven o'clock.
Getting transfusions for the last couple of weeks. Finally started showing signs, he's losing blood.
Want to dig through the data and work, you know, in detail and sit down on my computer.
What's your time, John? How are you doing?
I got just.
I thought Mr. Vessel was getting close.
I'll go just a little bit.
Is, is Vessel getting close too? Oh, does he?
He's got, top noise is good.
Age, age. That's what I had to wait for too.
I mean, I hope he started at eighteen, right?
Yeah, but I still had to put thirty-seven in to get to fifty-five. All right, thanks, guys. Hey, Jamie. Thank you for the question. Thank you.